Madam Clerk, you ready? Mr. Manager, Council.
Ready to go.
Settled in? All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor to call to order the public hearing and regular city council meeting for the City of Hartsfield September ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you so much for being here, especially those that came back after our last meeting. I will kick it off by asking Councilwoman Mack if she would lead us in the invocation pledge. And we'll begin with the civility pledge, and Ms. Mack is also gonna ask you to participate in a moment of silence, which I'll let her speak about. If you would all rise, we'll pray in our faith as you pray in yours.
Let us bow and pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, thou art God and God alone. Father, we thank you again for another day for us to come into these hall halls to assemble, to do the business of the City of Hartsfield that we all love so much. Lord, we thank you for all your loving kindness and your tender mercy that you have showed us in the past. And we ask you, Lord, to continue to keep us in your favor, in your grace, in your care. Father, we ask that you would continue to be the hedge of protection around the City of Hartsfield, our city, our state, our nation, and our world. Lord, you see all what's going on, but you are the author of peace and not confusion. So let us get on one accord. Let us have one mind and one heart and work together for the common good of all. Let us do what is right and fair, what is just and fair in your sight. Father, we ask you that you keep all of our emergency services, our personnel, our fire, EMS, and our police department. Keep them all safe because it's dangerous out there. Now, Lord, we ask you to come into this meeting and have us to do what is pleasing in your sight. We ask you these things in the name of that Son Jesus Christ. We do pray and give you all the glory, honor, and praise. Amen.
For the pleasure of leisure? Oh, yes, we'll go ahead with moments of silence.
Yes, I want to ask everyone, would we have a moment of silence for our city? Assistant city manager who lost her father, Mr. Wayne Carter. So if you would, please bow for a moment of silence for her. Thank you. And I also want to let ask everyone to please pray that the Lord will comfort, strengthen, and keep them during this time of believing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'll start off the pleasure of leisure.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag. And to the Lord, which stands as one nation under God, in the middle of the great city.
Finally, the civility pledge, I'll start off. I pledge to build a stronger and more positive community, that again, we're still engaged, respecting other's viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of my city. Thank you all very much. Please be seated if you are standing. First item, number three, I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approving minutes of the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second, or is there any discussion or edits for the minutes from the last meeting? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of waiving the reading of and approving the minutes of the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five regular city council meeting, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number four. We're all to presentations. Start off Petri City USA. We have a special guest here with a small presentation for us. Welcome, thank you so much for being here.
I don't want to turn my back, I'm gonna end up turning my back to somebody here. My name is Ann Hyler. I work with South Carolina Forestry Commission. I'm one of their urban foresters. They have about three hundred and fifty people, all of them managing timberland and fighting fires. But I come in and I sit cities with their city trees. One of the things I do is sit cities become Tree City. That's a program started by the Arbor Day Foundation. That's not us, that's the Arbor Day Foundation, Stephen Wild and World Wide. To be a Tree City, you need to be four standards. One, you need a public tree ordinance. Two, you need a tree board or a vision that deals with trees specifically. Three, you need to spend more than two dollars for capital on all tree-related issues. And four, you need to celebrate Arbor Day. So, South Carolina's Arbor Day is the first Friday in December. And Hartsfield spent it planting some long-reed vines, streets and grounds crew in lots and pots. Wanted to say that during the year of two thousand twenty-four, I know we are getting to two thousand twenty-five, but actually their thirty-nine years as Tree City was in two thousand twenty-four. This has to be applied for every year. They pruned, Hartsfield pruned three hundred and forty-eight trees, removed thirty-six trees, and planted four trees. This is the public trees here. So they are planting more than they are removing, which is aware and worthless. It's a lot of effort planting trees. Most of it is in then the decades after maintaining the trees. And Hartsfield is doing everything it can to keep Hartsfield full and green. So I am here to bring the Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City Awards to the city. This is Stephen Wild, essentially your urban forester, city arborist. Man, yes, who's now changing your downtown for the better, getting some more appropriate trees that don't rest with your sidewalks and curves and rubbers and silver by day. So what I do for this, and this is only my second time here, is to get a picture with the Tree City flag with all the city council.
Oh, she said all, y'all come on.
Yes, yes, and I need them all. I know there's all that are hiding. This is the world's smallest two thousand twenty-four plaque. Stephen on one side, somebody on the other who wants the reflective stickers. It's not a thing on this side. There's a reflective sticker over here, sorry, ma'am.
All times.
The world's tiniest. Now Stephen's going to stretch this out. It's not upside down, so it's going to be somewhat symmetrical. I'm gonna be the photo bomb on this side. I will mention the application for Tree City will be again this year, two thousand twenty-five. They will get it, we'll need a forty. So if anybody wants to assist in a bigger event, you can contact the mayor. Yes, I'm believing, but we're gonna get big four-oh.
You hear that? Stephen, you said we will get it, right?
Yes, yes. Stephen Wild's been doing this for twenty-two years, yes, successful. He's out of thirty-nine. If anybody wants to help with that.
Thank you so much for being here.
His name contributes significantly to being able to kill Wow Stone. With theory.
With theory, yeah.
Could doing all that stuff.
Mayor.
Got that down there.
Mayor, for the record, before she leaves, I think she should volunteer to do all the proclamations organizing because she did a great job keeping all the crowd. So I will recommend that she come back. If you could, that'd be excellent.
Well, I'm gonna stay up here for proclamations. And start off with National Voter Registration Day. Ms. Caraway is not here. Are you here to receive this one? Great, glad to have you. Thank you, thank you for being here. Whereas the framers of the Constitution established the United States as a representative democracy built on the foundation of civic engagement, and whereas a fundamental element of effective democracy is the principle that all eligible citizens should participate in fair and open elections, and active voter participation is vital to the strength and well-being of our community, bringing access to resources and funding to benefit our residents. And whereas voting is the citizen's opportunity to choose their elected decision-makers and voice their priorities, recognizing the decisions of elected leaders directly impacts the community and all who live there. Whereas the City of Hartsfield and Darlington County elections and voter registration are committed to encouraging voter registration access and participation in elections among all voting eligible citizens. And whereas National Voter Registration Day is a nonpartisan civic day dedicated to encouraging American citizens to register to vote and to providing opportunities to register to vote before the deadline. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield in this state, do hereby proudly proclaim September sixteenth of two thousand twenty-five as National Voter Registration Day and call upon all citizens to promote voter registration and participate as our democracy works best when more citizens participate. Thank you so much for the work that you do, and I would love if you would have an opportunity for some comments.
Sure. I'd just like to say quickly that I've been working in elections now for the better part of thirteen years. And I think one of the biggest things that we can do to make our communities better, to make our state better, make our country better, is for the people to participate, to people to pay attention, to learn about who they're voting for, and to come to meetings like this and have their voice heard. It's, we always think about, you know, the big elections, president, you know, three in four registered voters voting that. Some smaller elections, city elections, we're doing good if we get one in four. So do everything you can to let your neighbors know, let everybody in the community know, to get out and participate and make a difference.
Okay, set it back myself. Thank you so much. Well, if you wouldn't mind standing here for a photo op, and then Ms. Mack has some comment.
Mr. Wayne, would you also let us know what is the last day for voter registration? What's upcoming, November fourth election?
No problem. So for the November fourth municipal elections, for municipalities and the county. The four municipalities in the county, the in-person registration deadlines, in other words, someone coming to our office in Darlington is October the third by five P M. If they're gonna do it online, that is October the fifth, eleven fifty-nine P M. And if they do it by mail form, that's, it has to be postmarked by October the sixth, so. Yeah, office is one thirty-one Castro Street in Darlington, just off the square. Yep.
Great, thanks again.
Thank you.
Now, Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Is anyone here to receive this one? Well, I'll make a quick presentation, we'll get it to its rightful owner later. Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men. And when this year approximately three hundred thousand men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the country alone, and roughly thirty-five thousand will die this year from the disease, which is one man every fifteen minutes. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preventing and protecting our families. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield, hereby proudly proclaim the month of September twenty-two, five, as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month and encourage all of you to spread the word about the central role of prostate cancer screenings. And finally, Grandparents' Day. Anyone here to receive this? I'll do a quick read on our grandparents. Whereas grandparents hold a cherished place in our hearts and homes, offering unconditional love, wisdom, and stability to enrich the lives of their children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And whereas the United States first proclaimed Grandparents' Day as a national day in seventy-eight, President Carter in seventy-nine designated the first Sunday after Labor Day to recognize the many ways grandparents nurture families, support communities, inspire younger generations. And whereas Grandparents' Day two thousand twenty-five invites us to pause and express gratitude for the way, for the many ways grandparents and older adults shape our families, strengthen our neighborhoods, and enrich our community with wisdom, patience, and joy. Now therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the City of Hartsfield, do hereby proudly proclaim Sunday, September seventh, as Grandparents' Day and encourage all of you, the citizens of Hartsfield, to honor and celebrate grandparents and elders in their lives through acts of love, gratitude, and celebration of the irreplaceable role they hold in our families and community. Nobody for public comment then, we'll move along. We have some special guests here today. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, introducing yourselves.
Mayor, I appreciate, I appreciate your entire council here in Hartsfield. I'm with Congressman Russell Pride, my name is Jerry Shad. This is our new representative that's gonna cover this area. His name is Percy Payne. He is originally from Virginia. He worked on the Hill for a little bit in D.C. in our office. Is down here, super excited and motivated to take on any task request. We work with local municipalities, we work with constituents. And if there's anything that we can do, we would definitely try. The congressman has a saying, he'll kick over an ant hill any day for y'all. He absolutely loves this district. He loves Hartsfield, and I love being here too. It's a wonderful town, it's expanding, leadership's incredible, the community's incredible. We spent most of the afternoon here. We got a beautiful wings place that we went to, it was incredible, really good wings. But everyone's been so great to us, and we wanna reciprocate that by just saying, if there's something on a federal level that we can do, we will try. We have just surpassed fifteen million dollars in two and a half years brought back to constituents, just like y'all. So we're excited to continue down that path. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for everything y'all did.
Well, thank you too. And if you, all that stuff you said about how great Hartsfield is, could you say it in the microphone? Yeah, we appreciate y'all and the support that you've given us, it's been incredible. And I look forward to continuing to working with you.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the wing placement?
Wings and out. Amazing.
Okay, we don't have public comments, so that means it's your turn, Mr. Manager.
I just have a few things for you. First, you have a slew of reminders in front of you. First of all, we have Duke coming for a Power Hours, which is gonna be September sixteenth, eleven thirty to eleven to one thirty, here at City Hall. Come and meet your representatives for Duke Energy, they're very excited to have us, we're happy to have them. We're also having a new exhibit at the Denning, the Denning Bros. Jewelers is gonna be at the addition Wednesday, September twenty-fourth from five thirty to seven thirty. It's gonna be the newest permanent exhibit for the Hartsfield Museum, so come see that unveiling. And then, very exciting, we have a slew of Hartsfield Scarecrow contests and also downtown capers and all sorts of fun stuff we're doing this year. It's a themed Halloween event that we're having going on. We're partnering with Coker University for the Treats on the Street. We did move the location to be on, half on Coker Campus, and they're helping us out with everything, so we're very excited about that. And also, we have an unveiling of a very exciting new addition to our downtown that's to be determined. It's a closely guarded secret.
To be announced.
To be announced. It's in a secret, and I'm not gonna tell you what it is. But it's exciting, it's a Treats on the Street. So get ready for all that, but Halloween season this year, we're very excited about, even though it's September. So we're getting ready for that. In addition, we have the Dark Side Tours going on in our Hartsfield Museum. We have wonderful staff who do guided tours for ghosts, because Hartsfield is haunted. No one's gonna convince me otherwise, especially SBC. I'm not going in that building. And then last but not least, we do have a Veterans' Day celebration, November eleventh reminder for that, eleven o'clock A M. at Bury Park, one thirty-one Cargill Way. Very excited about all the events we have coming up. It is event season for us, so stay tuned and keep track on Facebook, on anywhere else you wanna check, because we have a lot going on. And lastly, I do have an exciting announcement, we were accepted, Mayor, for the Mayor's Alliance Grant that is actually to combat children's hunger. So we were accepted to have the application go in, it's due October twenty-fourth. We're gonna be submitting that in, I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars, correct? That can go towards combating children's hunger within the community. We do plan on partnering with a local agency to do that and then maybe the recipient. So we're excited to apply for that, hopefully we'll get some good news about that soon.
Yeah, the fact that we made it through the preliminary is very promising. And I'd ask, when I put in the preliminary application, I asked for, I think, forty-three thousand dollars. And they said, well, the max is twenty-five, I said, I'll take it. So we're gonna go for all of it and see, and hope for the best, see what we can get.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the question about that? Does, do all Darlington County students still receive free breakfast and lunch?
I think so. I, I'm ninety-five percent sure they do. I mean, we can get confirmation, but I think that's true.
This is a great help as well.
Absolutely, but during the summer, this money will, is pretty specifically targeted towards filling the gap.
Yeah, that's okay.
During the summer. I love that out, that's exactly, it's meant to, not during the school year, but during the summer months when they're not. So that's all happening.
Okay. Yeah, thank you to the staff in the back that plans and executes on these events, because y'all, we've got some seriously spooky good stuff coming up for Halloween, and it won't stop until New Year's, basically. So I'm really excited about what y'all are doing this year, appreciate your hard work. Speaking of hard work, again, as I always like to mention, thank you to our staff for preparing the departmental reports and doing all the work all month that leads to those reports. And I will stop running my mouth and move on to item eight A, Public Hearing and Final Reading of Ordinance four, four, nine, seven. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation.
Yes, sir. This is Public Hearing and Final Reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-seven, Ordinance to amend the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina City Code Appendix A, zoning article three, definition and terms in article nine, District Regulation, Section Five, B one, Central Business District Zone, Section Six, B two, B three, Business Zone, Section Seven, M one, Industrial Zone, and Section Eight, M two, Industrial Zone, to add tattoo facilities as a permitted use. Before the public hearing, to present, this is an amendment, as recommended by the Pub Planning Commission, to allow, Hartsfield to allow tattoo ordinances, but tattoo shops, but only if they comply to the state law, which is in itself very vigorous. This will just allow that possibility and not have the city restricting anything other than state law.
Gotcha. Well, I would entertain a motion to, I need to open the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
I will now open the public hearing before the final reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-seven for comment from the public. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. Nobody is clamoring to the front, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. So I would now entertain a motion, excuse me, to approve the final reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-seven.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the final reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-seven.
Thank you, Counselor.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on this ordinance? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Will this ordinance be in its entirety by the state on MuniCode so that people can see it for themselves?
Absolutely. It'll be by reference in case the state updates anything, but it will be by reference.
Okay.
But good point, all this is available online for anybody that is curious. It'll take a little bit for this new text to be incorporated into the online codes, but it's there freely available. Anything else? All right, hearing no more comments. All those in favor of approving the final reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-seven, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One aye, but the ayes have it. Ordinance forty-four, ninety-seven passes. Item B. The public hearing and final reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight. Mr. Manager, would you publish it by title and presentation for the record before we have the public hearing?
Yes, sir, Public Hearing and Final Reading of Ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight, an ordinance that the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina, authorize a lease purchase financing in the amount not exceeding one million, three hundred thousand dollars in other matters related there too. To present, this is a seeking to get bids for the repayment of our expenses of one point three million dollars for various capital items. These include police, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for patrol vehicles, cameras, radars, and barricades, fires, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for a staff vehicle, as well as repair of the front pad to the fire department and along with other various renovations. Parks and Rec, we do have some painting and gym equipment utility carts, which is like a golf cart for our facility. Streets and Grounds is getting a new pickup and boom mower tractor for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Museum, which is actually the addition, is thirty thousand dollars for plumbing repairs so we don't back up during certain events, namely weddings, which seems to happen every single time. Water is gonna be two hundred thousand dollars, we do need a new asphalt roller, wheel loader, and also some made rehab to our pump houses. Sewer is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for some little station upgrades. Water Park is eighty thousand dollars, which is an annual eighty thousand dollar we budget for allocated expenses, which typically means it's coating the slides to make sure they go faster. Solid Waste is ninety-five thousand dollars for a one-ton pickup of platform bed. All that in total is about a little bit less than one point three with some contingency built in. And that's what we're buying this year.
Is that all?
That's it.
Um, thank you for that. The city clerk said there's a, what appears to be a typo or a Scrabble's error in the number, we need to.
If you wouldn't mind going over that with Scrabble's error.
Yeah, we wanna make sure to keep our i's dotted and t's crossed. So I would ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as amended. Approve, okay, so I would entertain a motion to amend the ordinance to change the number one million, three hundred thousand to one hundred, one million, three hundred and five thousand.
Mr. Mayor, the amendment is so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? So the ordinance is amended?
Public hearing first, if you'd like to do, open it up first, then we'll go from there.
Now open the public hearing?
You can.
Okay. So hereby open the public hearing for the amended ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, you are welcome to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. I really thought there'd be somebody. Hearing none, we will close the public hearing on ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight as amended. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight as amended.
Mr. Mayor, so moved, that we approve ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion from Council? Any clarification or anything? And just for the public benefit, this is not new spending, it's budgeted, they're executing on the plans that are in, already in the budget that has been reviewed.
And it's about one million less from last year, too.
Cool?
Yep.
Still, it's a lot of stuff, though.
Yeah.
Hearing no other comment, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance, approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four, ninety-eight as amended, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance passes, congratulations. Moving on to new business, hopefully it'll move a little bit quicker. Resolution nine, twenty-five, oh, one. Mr. Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record.
Yes, sir, it's resolution zero, nine, twenty-five, oh, one. Approval to apply for the Municipal Association of South Carolina M A S C Impact Grant. This is a brand-new grant that M A S C introduced at their annual meeting. This is designed to create an impact, of course, as the name suggests. This is actually kind of referred to commonly as the Fix It Grant. We looked at several things, there has to be things that are unbudgeted. We're already doing a number of fixes throughout the town, so to speak. And we looked at things that might have some visible impact. We are excited to potentially look at all brand-new chairs, benches, amenities for our downtown, to brighten up the downtown. In addition to the lighting grant that we're looking at later on, this would be a nice little companion to that grant. It's twenty-five thousand dollars, a five thousand dollar match. So we're excited to try and go after this. The deadline is actually coming up, so we wanted to go ahead and get this on the agenda for you guys. We think it's a good opportunity to just spend some extra money we hadn't accounted for and go get, kind of brighten up our town.
Awesome, and then twenty-five thousand dollars may not get you as much outdoor furniture as you would think, but it still could make a significant difference if we get the award. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution oh, nine, twenty-five, oh, one.
So moved.
Second, motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions on this resolution? I already ran my mouth, so anybody else? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution oh, nine, twenty-five, oh, one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution passes. Resolution nine, twenty-five, oh, two, Mr. Manager, if you would.
Yes, sir, it's approval to apply for U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, F A A, grant. To present, this is to expand our apron, to allow for us to expand the number of aircraft available to house while on the airport. This is companion to follow-up grant to our already expanded runway that we've done, or renovated runway, whether. And this grant and the next grant coming up are just to continue that process.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution nine, twenty-five, oh, two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion on this or questions about it?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a mention that I was able to go out to the Rise Arrow event that they had out there.
Yes, ma'am.
And what they've done so far is really, really good, so this is going to help that.
We've got a nice little airport, if you've never been out there. But thank you for making that point. Any other question or comment? Hearing none, I'll take a vote on nine B, all those in favor of approving Resolution nine, twenty-five, oh, two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution passes. Resolution oh, nine, twenty-five, oh, three, Mr. Manager, if you would.
Sir, it's approval to apply for South Carolina Aeronautics Grant to fund rehabilitation, expansion of the apron of the Hartsfield Regional Airport. This is a companion application as well.
Sounds familiar.
It does.
Thank you for the presentation. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution oh, nine, twenty-five, oh, three.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on this? Really is just a.
Mr. Mayor, we have an idea of how large we want this April B.
I can't answer that, do you know off the top of your head, Mr. Manager?
I believe, I don't know exactly footage, Brandon, do you have an idea?
The design portion, which is kind of what this grant will be funding, the design portion will kind of let us know, we do plan to expand about to where the current T-shape ain't.
So that would. I'm trying to remember just how long that distance is, it may. It may double the capacity if the design allows. Is that fair?
It's fair.
Yeah. Right, of course. Thank you. Well, if you couldn't hear the response, he said that this grant is to fund the design work that will tell us the answer to Mayor Protem's question on just how much we can fit out there. But the space he's talking about is significant, so it should be, should be a meaningful little change. Thank you for your question. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution nine twenty-five oh three, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution passes. Resolution nine twenty-five oh four, Mr. Manager, if you would publish the resolution by title and presentation for the record?
Yes, sir. It's ratification of prior ordinance authorizing acceptance of real property by donation of approximately one point six-one acres. This is to clean up some paperwork for the donator of, as we refer to as Pedigree Park, which is going to be on the corner of Fourth and Washington by the Pedigree Properties and Industrial Properties. It was a mix-up when they put on the paperwork who was donating what. They both are assigned to the same entity, owned by the same family, but the paperwork was mixed up. So we are ratifying the acknowledgement that we have corrected that documentation.
And you may remember, this goes back to the end of last year when we got this donation, so it's just cleaning up the paperwork. Again, I had to ask for a motion to, thank you for the presentation, a motion to approve resolution oh-nine twenty-five oh four.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions about this?
So it's the same property, Daniel?
Exact same property, just the owner who transferred is being corrected.
Got you. Like the LLC.
And to update, we are still working with them. They are being very good partners with us about potentially taking down some of the trees and vegetation that doesn't, isn't needed to create a very wonderful passive and beautiful park space for us. So we're very excited, and it will do nicely with our recently announced Four Street sidewalks and also Washington Street sidewalks will tie into it nicely.
Yeah, there's a good bit of overgrowth there that will expand the usable space far more than I thought before I saw it firsthand. Any other question on that? Hearing none.
One other question. I was over at Burger King the other day. Is there anything to improve that building?
The building's coming down. You talking about the White Barn?
Yes, the White Barn will be.
Is that the White Barn?
The White Barn is part of the progress. So currently, that property is adjacent to two other commercial developments. One has already been transferred or to new owners, which is going to be a potential roast beef-themed restaurant. Then there's going to be a, that White Barn is going to be a potential Jiffy Lube, is the plan right now.
Potential what?
Jiffy Lube-type shop.
Okay, all right.
Not to name out a specific company. Adjacent, Jiffy Lube adjacent. We'll go with that. They change oil. But the property already, what is, the long, ongoing conversation with this is that when we transfer the land over to a park, that changed the stormwater requirements for the property, which need to be rectified so that those two properties can move forward. That White Barn will come down, and then, but the two remaining properties behind it, we're going to stay the same they are. There's going to be a retention pond that's put in, and then this will be a passive park surrounding it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A question led to a phone response. Anything else? No more questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution oh-nine twenty-five oh four, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution passes. First reading of ordinance forty-four ninety-nine, Mr. Manager, if you would.
Yes, sir. It's ordinance forty-four ninety-nine, amending the business license ordinance to the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, update to the class schedule as required as by Act one seventy-six, twenty-twenty. As you recall, this is a standardization of the business license across South Carolina. Every year, we have to review and make sure that we are updating the class schedules to fit alongside those other class schedules across the state. This is going to be the first reading for that with public hearing next time.
Okay. Any, I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance forty-four ninety-nine as presented so well by the manager.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and a third. Any discussion on this or any questions?